The Valley County Fair, you guys want to come on up? Everybody to the table and we'll come down there. Chew on this. See if we can't figure this out. Love this issue?
That one's a request, that was their budget.
Just their agendas and notes.
Okay.
And then there's a map of the fairgrounds.
He said that they were gonna give. Like a preliminary.
Give my legs to the table in this chair.
It's just their agendas and. If you need no help.
Oh, we're gonna let Commissioner Mopple lead this one since she's kind of the commissioner over this.
She's kind of a. We ran out of time last time. It looks like you guys have set up. What the budget repair are, what you're gonna do up to year, that type of thing. So maybe that is the best document to use.
The people at the meeting came up with that. We didn't have a.
Okay. It'll work.
Yeah, it should work.
I have equipment on the rentals. Is that the tents?
Yes.
All tents, the white. Seven thousand.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go over this, Scott. We can figure out, you know, kind of where we're gonna find some of this funding. But also, um, and some of this I think can be ARPA funding now. So it doesn't need to come from within your budget. There are other avenues available to us. It's the American Rescue Plan Act. We have that. That might as well coming in, we can use it for anything now and fairs are actually one of the items that kind of really jumped out, but. So grandstand. So you guys have done the research, so that's a ninety-two hundred dollar bill.
Just an estimate on what we pulled up. Well, rather, um, some of the people on the board wanted to do grandstands over the chute. Or over the end, you know, the entryway and stuff, those are gonna be a lot more. That was just a starting. Starting.
So these would be where?
Probably on the end. Capchute's all.
I think, yeah, if you clean and step up and move it. I talked to Brian Hines and I took some notes. And I, I apologize, that was kind of a last minute discussion, so he, he did write just some ideas down too. If we moved some stuff, there'd be more room for your standard.
Will you turn on the projector?
Stand. There's a program picture for everybody on the.
In the back.
These grandstands are down here, you're seeing it this side here.
Yes. And we could do some of them if we wanted to, if we took outside. We took out. Because moving over, we'll rearrange.
Yeah, that's right, all this stuff is over on the east side now and.
So if we were to look at purchasing grandstands every year to expand that, it'd be about a ten thousand dollar a year investment. For four ones that you guys can kinda reconfigure. So rearrange the arena. Five rows. So I want, how many people?
I know, exactly. But. I just.
We're still dealing with COVID.
Well, my question is, have, have we talked to the city about writing those down at the baseball?
They were allowed to for a couple years and then they had stuff come out last. So. I know when Brian was on there, he tried the high school, so.
Little mic down there too, Cherry. Pull yours out there again.
At least five of them, just to do this up there.
It's a standard arena, ours is a tad smaller.
Yeah, it might not be something you. Not much, because you're gonna have to do a lot of movement.
Um, the other question I had is years ago, that used to be sanctioned for Little Bridges Rodeo and they came back when you said our arena's too small.
It is a tad smaller than your standard rodeo arena.
So if we made it.
Fifty, I think it's one fifty by. Sixty, it's a long time ago, I did my arena, but, um, and ours is just a tad smaller than that. I didn't know we had regulations on what size it had to be.
Well, I think that's why they left is because the arena wasn't sanctioned size, it messed up the. Bear racers, it messed up the pole benders and all that stuff because it wasn't full size.
As far as the ICA, which we've had for the last, I don't know, five years or so, it's not been a problem.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is if we made it, made it big enough so that sanctioned by Little Bridges, they would come back too. So we might have more than one rodeo. What I'm trying to get at, long term, that would be a better.
People would love to see a rodeo there every Friday night.
And I don't think it would be huge to expand it, because it's not like really small. It's just a tad bit smaller than standard, I think it was like ten feet. I think it's one fifty, like, I haven't looked at that in a while.
Now that we've pulled out all those pins on the south end, we could shove it south.
And that is part of the rearranging because, and Toby is best at that because it's, it's in his head. But, um.
That's how it was like talking to Brian.
Yeah, a lot of it, that's just my scribbles from the meeting, like literal scribbles. Trying to get what Toby is saying.
He understands.
Trying to, trying to get what Toby is saying.
Over here.
And is that work then, that you guys are gonna be working on? Is that something that the county needs to plan on?
Rearranging the arena? That, well, from our meeting previously, you guys said that would have to be a subcontractor, which would be best if it was Toby. Because he rearranged it last time we rearranged. And, um, has a really good idea of how things are put together and what needs to be cut to move and. Those kind of things, or consult with Toby, something like that, I would suggest.
And that's probably something that's. Specific in nature, I don't even know if.
Yes. Well, he's got the equipment to pick sections up and like the chutes, I mean, we had, they were welded together and I know they had to cut them and. He's got the excavators and stuff to pick up a section and move it, which I'm, there's a lot of people in this county with excavators and equipment, but.
So now that we have a picture up here, where would the other grandstands go? Would it be this side?
Those are the ones Toby wanted to go over. And then, um.
So the ten thousand dollars worth that.
Yes. His rearranging. He sh- he sh- um. Team roping, calf roping, all of that kind of stuff is gonna go over, so he wanted chutes on this.
Or it's seats.
Seats.
So. Who's going to check with Toby to see if he has the capacity to rearrange that? To rearrange that. As he already said, he would do that. That one's done then.
So, so do, do you guys like talk to him about being a subcontractor?
A bid?
Yes, he would have to give us.
Aren't those railroad ties and, and kind of like a plywood in between each post on that end? So you're probably looking at a lot of new material to do.
So it's over fifty thousand, we have to do a request for purpose from multiple.
What we have to do is to set up a bid process, these are what we want you to do. See, I can't see it coming in over fifty thousand, but I want to get back to this point about the Little Bridges part of it. If we're gonna remodel this and add all this stuff, I think it should be considered that we get an arena that's sanctioned by Little Bridges. So they could come in here and do a rodeo too, and rent the facility, put it all on. Because I remember that was the issue years back, years ago, it was, it wasn't big enough for what.
Tyler Crockett would have a good idea on that, so I think he was involved in that one. It was before I came on.
Try to yourself, we know to talk to him about what that is.
Regulation size.
For Little Bridges. If we have to expand the south end ten or twelve feet, that should all be part of this job.
Okay.
I think, personally.
Well, it'd be best to do that when we're rearranging.
Bathrooms. So, we have had numerous conversations about just trying to get portable bathrooms. I mean, even one of those units that you can buy, Dave, you were talking about, maybe it's like a hundred thousand dollars, that showers and bathrooms.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, as I was saying, like the rental ones that they bring in for fire collapses and those kinds of events, those things. Easy to maintain, they're easy to drain, you know, I mean.
The hard part with that is the time of the year, there's a lot of fires and they're usually out.
So you can purchase them, that would be my recommendation, instead of leasing something that we're gonna replicate every single year. You know, I think we need to look at what a purchase cost would be.
You could put a concession in the middle.
Those are still a lot cheaper than actually having to build.
I was gonna say.
So, I will ask Brian.
Cost, but I know that. Both of them, I've talked about like the C X T. All the concrete ones have gone up quite a bit over the years, you can buy two or one ounces.
When we were looking at this with Brian a few years back, C X T that was, I think it was a six bay wood shower.
And concession.
What do you mean by concession?
Look at the concession stand in the middle so that you can sell your.
It was sixty-six.
You know, you put a vendor in there in the middle.
So they had a water.
Hundred thousand dollars.
At that time, it was about sixty-six thousand for a new C X T, I'm sure it's probably eighty or a hundred now.
Is that the ones like the Forest Service has?
Yeah, they're a concrete.
And he was doing a bid for them.
Cobarton is a C X T, but this is a big giant one, I used to have.
He, he gave us all the paperwork at one point, because he was doing a grant for it, we didn't get the grant.
We didn't get the grant.
But, um, Carl might have all that.
I'm getting more stuff from you. I'm helping you, and I'll put it and I'll scan it in this time and there won't be a mystery.
That would be a lot better way to go. Structure, I mean, we could literally be, you know, I can't even imagine what a bathroom would be.
I don't think it'd be that much, but the thing is, the C X Ts you can get heat in, so you can use them in the wintertime as well.
Anything we construct that could have heat. Sewer tie in, the water supplies all around there, it's not ripping out like that. Do it on a slab with, you know, metal frame walls, it's like building a house.
It's still in a good location. Hence of water.
Water, I mean, we're looking at the same location where it went there.
Because sewer and water's here, and I think there's power there too.
Yeah. The sewer runs right out the center, that thing's all the way out, so if you can go anywhere to the north, it will.
Yes.
I mean, that's a good thought.
Too much further north though, and you're almost to the bathrooms at the park.
So if you did a tent though, I mean, if you ever put up a permanent structure instead of that tent, would it be here? The bathrooms on the south end and, or would it be?
The structure that. Yes, all of those. Now, is that in the way of the road department? Because I know, um. That seems to be the central dumping spot. For snow or whatever, because our sides, that building gets pretty demoed each year. So, would it be better in a different location, maybe closer to our barns versus, um, in the middle of the parking lot?
That's where the hookups are.
Right. It's, it doesn't bother me.
So, well, think about what kind of Toby was saying to you, you got your fence line that goes along in front of that arena. So if you pushed it back, because you could control your.
Well, you're gonna make that arena longer too.
Go point at it.
Okay. So say even you moved your fence line, this building's no longer an issue. You even have like some way to control your public so that they can still get out to any kind of vending. Your rodeo traffic can still get in, your expansion has enough room here for whatever you need to grow. And this is still like a, a pretty central location that's pretty viable for the whole program stuff about them. You know, I talked to Brian even about it. Just a little more input or bidding, people that done other rodeos too. Or whatnot.
Well, I think we need to think about this. With the road department gone. If the road department was gone, what do we want to do? That's the ultimate goal, hopefully, with some of the ARPA funds is to do a lot of this all at once.
So you'd bring the arena to the south. Because there's not a lot of room to the north.
Whatever we need to do to make it Little Bridges sanctioned.
Right.
So I don't think it's gonna be much.
You could pull it, you could put, because you could, you know.
There's not a lot of room there.
Actually, the county owns up almost to right behind the title company.
And, and the reason this would best be used as an arena stage, don't forget that how low that water table is.
Oh, no, for sure, I'm just saying, it would, it would make sense to elongate it to the south rather than the north.
Yes, I agree.
And then, if this in an ideal future, those buildings are torn down, that could be a year-round event center. Every year. So if we. If we shrink.
Come around.
Too many.
And get everything out of there.
On the touchscreen, it's not a touchscreen.
But this could be a facility like that and then you have even the other, the buildings that they were non-existent in that corner, there's parking. Eventually, so you've got a year-round event center. I mean, you could even have a small barn event for wedding or whatnot venue and you can still have parking. You know, and then, uh. Facility, you have my office.
But this, you've got the horse area too.
That's the goal, is to repurpose the shop and the road department into it. Your guys' office with a big office room where all the mechanics days are now. I'm thinking too, the metal building that you have open class in. Is not a bad building, you can't use in the wintertime because it's not insulated or anything, but. Wooden ones, the three red wooden ones, all that stuff to me should be all updated. We have, according to Scott, we have some drainage issues there that we gotta work on.
So that's where the lamb and the goat pens are, and that, that's one of the main water ways through that ground stand, there's just where gravity goes. So you know, every year we're digging the trench there to keep the sheep and the goats out of the. Water, and then one year it was so bad by the vendors, they were ankle deep in water with electrical cords on them.
That's what we talked about a lot.
Yeah.
If we were, if we were rearranging that fairgrounds, the road department is not there. I would like to see the measurements and flip that arena this way, so you have so much more room. I think we have wasted space on, um.
The issue with doing that is the grandstands are on Inberry Post. That green roof there on the west side of that is in the ground solid.
And right on, right past the little road that we drive in. It's, it's a, it's not flat, it's up a hill. So you'd have to build retaining walls and cut all, no, on the other side, on the, on the west.
Yeah, if you're redoing it though, that's, I was like, long-term goal, I think that's, would be a lot more space for us if it was flipped. If you can't, you can't.
Consideration of sun, where's the sun?
I'm in the crow's nest and it's right in your eyes, the whole evening.
On the east side.
Until nine o'clock when it finally dips.
So if your crow's nest is over here, right?
No, it's on the, um.
The west end is on the east side, sure.
Yep, yep, right there.
Definitely don't want, you know, I mean.
It is what it is, but.
Have people down here, you know, staring at the sun.
No, they wouldn't, um, they'd be looking at this way, it's, it's the sun setting on this side that, that gets you. But if you can't move those posts, then that's, that's just.
There's still some other movement in there that would make it.
Is the old recycling place, is that gonna be parking as well, or is that gonna be something else?
That's city, so we can't answer that question.
Okay, so the bathrooms, we're gonna research C X Ts. The crow's nest.
And didn't you just redo the crow's nest, Scott?
Yeah.
You fit the floors.
The floor's alright.
Maybe we need to build something like bigger shade over it.
Put a new board on where.
Really?
Yeah. The set stuff that counters there. You got it, jumping down on the floor and stuff, look at it underneath, it's not dilapidated.
I just know years ago. When they did a lot of their arena, it was built that way because of the sun. People were sitting looking out, they couldn't see, everything was on the south end. And you turned to look and everybody on the south end got to see all the action, even on the north end didn't, it's too far away. So that's why we moved it across. So that the bowls and the broncs, everything came out that way. And everybody got a better view.
When I was there, I'm competing, everything was on the south end, right, all the shoots and.
Did you do mutton busting when you competed?
I couldn't handle, couldn't handle the corners. Stay on.
Got me on the corner too, man.
Oh, he still has his buckle.
No, I didn't get a buckle.
So the crow's nest, describing your opinion after we got there, is that something we can put some kind of little shade, something, I mean, even if it was a shade scale for.
I have like the, the black meshes that are shady.
Well, when. Are you talking down, or?
Where do you need the shade?
I don't.
Do you need it on the south end so it doesn't shine in the end of it, or?
I don't know that you can fix it, I, we've, we've dealt with it, but we have to go over the board, the shelving that, the counter that you talked. Because you have to see when the rider crosses the chutes, so we're over that quite a bit, so if you put something in front of it, it would be in the way, I don't, I don't.
I was saying it up above.
It goes out a little bit, but it's just, when the sun's there to there, it's, it just happens to be the time of the rodeo.
So why is this on the list then?
I was not down at the fairgrounds last year, my son got married, but I know when I was in the crow's nest. Hundred and fifteen pounds, those boards moved under you. And I'm like, okay, when you get some. Bigger people than me on there, I didn't feel safe. I was not there last year, they repaired it.
They're working on it, all three of us up in there.
So you guys meet Wednesday?
We do, we, Wednesday, yes.
So the electrical, more power to the arena. So this was, been a long conversation too, I know that Idaho Power had given, I think it's gotten down to ten thousand dollar power free in there. I wonder if we should ask Idaho Power if they would partner it all and bring more power into that area?
Didn't we, uh, I don't know babe, but it's been long enough, didn't they pay for the big spotlights? The arena, they added all those on, that was part of that Idaho Power, and I don't know, that was.
So why, like, in business electrical, what is the issue?
The issue is with the vendors. Cook the food stuff out in the middle of the whole yard, there's not enough juice for.
We only have the one pole.
Not enough outlets.
Not enough outlets, not enough amps.
There's a pole right here, Ryan, somewhere.
There's two, no, we don't.
You can see the pole there.
There's, there's one like over here and then we're close, and so all of these.
One on the barns.
They go black.
There's actually a pipe in the ground, they run it from the corner of the shed there. And they have a metal plate out there, right like right now, and you gotta with a finder and find it and pull it up and then that's what.
But along with all of the vendors streaming this way, you normally have campers here that are on that pole also.
Was Jeff able to bury those wires under her pipe last year, Scott?
I know we had the E D S.
We're down there. Working on the, the box that got tore up last, before last. We're working kind of way off the northeast corner of the building and have the, we put that traffic rated. Box in there, because they're plowing the snow the year before, we're looking out there and pull up the wires, because. Power comes from the corner of, not the hog building, but the next one over there. The northeast corner of that building is, is the power source, you have that one there, it's actually the, the northwest number, it's right there. Pole, it runs underground to the corner of that building there, out is, is a box. I thought there was more poles in there now.
The one by, the power pole by one of the barns, that kicked the breaker every time we plugged anything into it. I don't know about last year, but every year previously, we were never able to use that.
We replaced the box, because they, they ripped the wires out of it when we hooked it last year. We did that there. And that's the only, that's the only box I know of that's.
So if this building comes down, we put a C T S or C X T in there. Power there to be the.
Have to see what, what they could serve, because there's, there is a panel on the east side of it. Comes off that panel there. There's a pretty big corridor there.
Take a look at that. Down there, we can get Idaho Power down there and see what else we can do. Put another hole over here somewhere.
I thought there was a pole in the middle of the yard.
Right, right there, you can see it.
Where we put the grandstands. Yes, the ice and the grandstands go on there.
Right there, that dirt, yep, yep.
I don't know what that is, but there was a pole, I thought right there.
That's where we plug the ice in at.
And, and the grand sta- or not the grandstands, the stage where your bands play and stuff, they plug into that power pole.
We'll have Scott take a look at that whole area, make sure we don't have that there. Sort of a loading ramp?
That is needed for both rodeo and four H.
We could use it too.
Loading ramp for animals?
Yeah, livestock, for the livestock truck. But really, for these guys as well, they can move it, and, and it lets them both in and out for their stock too. And that's, that's a.
I mean, once you unload the semi and the stock is on there, you could move it and get it out and, and have a lot more room and then they use it at. Four in the morning to load up steers and stuff to head out, so.
And, and my only thing on loading ramp is get one with the least amount of slope, and get a real short steep one, get a real long.
Toby's been looking for them.
Because the short ones are there to get pigs and sheep out.
Toby's been looking for them and he has the mini bowls and stuff, he said he found one the other day for twelve hundred.
That's not too big of an expense, I think you can get, two D M B, you could probably get one for under two thousand. And they're on wheels, they have like a bolt winch, you jack them up and it comes up on the wheels. Take a bar and hook it to your truck and away you go. Easy peasy.
Sprinklers for the watering arena, is that a little sprinkler?
Yep, because every year we have. Grill war three to get water trucks, because it's fire season and they're all somewhere, to water that arena. Before we work it up, after we work it up, every night, every morning.
So the sprinklers.
Yes, yes, we were thinking. We try, it's always.
So this, this, let's step back to that, this is how you maintain an arena. So this, this, let's step up to that. This is how you maintain an arena. You wanna water it with a certain, oh my gosh.
So the sprinkler, the county has one water truck, two water trucks?
I think they have two and maybe three. But they use that to blade in the fall in the back country. That's when it works. Everything is back in the old plan. Every grader has a water truck with it.
And you may need it multiple times. If you overwater, you're, you're taking your grader through there longer too. It's really, cause there's a balance to dump in that truck. And then usually one is under repair, cause they're older trucks that the county has for these. And one is usually in the back country. I'm not saying that's always, but.
Oh, so I think at the end, at the end, there's a water hydrant, water hydrant.
There is. It's on the corner.
It's on.
Right there on that corner.
Right there.
City water?
Yep, yes.
And, and we were just thinking, my late husband was designing this, um, and he had it all worked out on what size sprinklers and where you would have to place them, cause the, the rainbirds that you would put on there are like a hundred and fifty feet. Um, and we would just run black pipe around the three sides of the arena and.
Sprinklers to the top of the arena, so that they're.
Yep, and then they're raining over the arena, yes.
That's not an expensive a truck. That's a lot cheaper than.
I don't know about sprinklers on the fence. I don't think, those are sanctioned by the rodeo stuff. Cause we had an issue with chain link on that. And they said you can't have chain link on a rodeo arena. So that's when we went to the plywood years ago. They do make a device that would hook into a fire hydrant, roll it up, turn the water on and it reels itself back in. By the time it gets in, you shut it off and pull it out and it's only, it's called a big gun. And that, I think would be perfect for that. So we'll look at big guns, sprinkler.
That just eliminates the need for someone to drive the truck to get into the arena to, you know, warm more.
Well, then you can sprinkle it whenever you want, not have to worry about trying to find somebody.
My horses, or, yeah, exactly.
Well, and the thing is that we try and use it in most rodeos around the year. New gates for the stock pit and runway. There, I know that we were fixing pieces first last year, but not.
Most commercial grade gates that are, what we call two inch, are real heavy steel or a couple hundred dollars for a twelve footer. So if you buy twenty of them, you're only looking at. Not very much money.
And some of the issue was on the runway coming back. Um, we needed higher gates. Cause some of those bowls have been in situations like that and they'll run at it and clear those gates. Which means they could clear our fence onto the railroad track.
They could go really wherever they want.
But if it's higher, it's more of a deterrent than, and Carl has more of that. What kind of gates he was doing.
It is so vague to me unless you know what they're asking here.
You probably left on that powder river gate or something on that line that we're looking at.
And I think if you went to D M B as a fair board and said, hey, we need to buy X amount of gates and X amount of panels, kinda deal, it can make us. They'll make you a good deal.
Um, I think it's a little more vague until we got it rearranged to say exactly how many.
You guys could come up with that. If you come back and say, we need X amount of panels, X amount of gates, we need.
And that's all on Carl's.
Red row ties to put them in, to hold them, the bolts, all that stuff.
Right.
Give us, you know, what you're looking for there.
Do you outgate by what condition?
So the bottom, uh, that's the center go, um, right, that corner. Um, it's a big white gate and it's got a, a wheel on it, which is really hard to get open and closed for the guy, whether it's a buck and bronc or a bull, cause that's their exit. To get the gear off of them.
So what needs to change?
We just need one that's a little, probably a powder river panel and we'd put, um, uh, wheels and, and plywood on it, so they can't see back out. But when they're bucking and they're going in there and this guy's trying to maneuver a gate, it's not the best situation.
They're out gravel for the warm up.
So that's the area, yes. All of that, we wanted to take the gravel back out of there and use that for all of the team ropers and barrel racers and stuff to warm up, so they're not out in this other area.
And what does that become, dirt?
Yes.
We put that in when we bought it. Bill Willie was on, fishing back then and we wanted, we thought at that time, all the four Hers were gonna camp up there. That's where their campers were gonna go. So that's why it was gravel.
It's also a spring kinda across there.
Right. And then it, so if you did clean this out, Idaho Horse Course willing, well, we've already got it now, but we're establishing a horse trail course that they're gonna help buy equipment for to kinda stage it around here. So that will still be viable even if you were to clean that up or, you know, whatever you need to do for your, the warm up area. So it'll get multiple uses. It's not, you know, and then.
I think they can still camp back there, El.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, cause you leave the gravel and put something on top. So we at least have a base under that, so it doesn't sink.
Like just fill it in.
It's kind of, it's actually kinda behind the holding pens back there. No, on, on the, on the south end, right in there.
Damn, yeah, yeah, right in there.
There's soggy.
Something to pump out of, you know, or Asian guys.
When Ben Willie and I put the pipe across, right where that arrow is, over to Kelly's white water, we dug down, it had to be, I think it was eight feet underneath the railroad. We dug down that trench, it immediately filled up with ninety-eight degree water.
I was just thinking about using water other than city water. Right, water something, like city water's expensive.
After the arena, what's it?
Shallow.
Right.
Yeah, very shallow.
Even for the stock. Sure. Drink out of ditches.
It's a recovery way, can pump out, I can recover quick enough.
I, I don't really see them, the city charging us that much to tie into their, I don't, I don't. I don't know, maybe there's some law or something can't do that, but, and I can check with the city on that. It's gonna be cheaper than drilling a well, putting a pump in it, I can tell you that.
Like I said, even if that's artesian there or something, that's something that's just gonna, it would fill up. It would have to recover at a rate. Operate one of those big guns, you're not gonna.
We were putting pipe together, twenty foot sections underwater, underneath the railroad, coming up the other side. And we're doing it all, I mean, the water's up to here, trying to hook all this stuff up. I knew it was hot.
Could we put a holding tank and we could fill up full of water when we need it, like five hundred gallons, and then it would have the pressure to do the arena and then it would just gradually refill at night, or?
You'd have to have a pump in it to pump it to the arena, where the fire hydrant is pressurized. And that much water fire hydrant, you could do that whole arena in probably an hour. That's a lot of water.
Okay.
But it, you know, that's.
Know what the water bills look like. It's kinda like, you know. Especially on multiple.
But it's a draw for cascade, so I would think they'd say, hey, we'll help you give you a break or better. Know what I'm saying? Cause it pulls a lot of people into town. I will ask Judy that. I don't think there's even a meter on it, so we might not even get charged.
We had a water bill. From, from using that.
Did they get ahold of you?
Not recently, no. Are we outstanding, or?
No, I just, we needed to transfer the bill over to the county, so I called three times, got nowhere, so I went in last week.
Okay.
She said that she has to talk.
I haven't heard from her.
So. I just wanted to let you know that's where I ended.
That was a water bill for the rest of it. That's just regular water.
Right.
Just stand by. I think a fire hydrant was totally.
You said who'd you speak with?
You know, I didn't get her name, she was very short though.
I don't know.
There's a fire hydrant in the end.
Heads are.
Well, they were using that hydrant, they were using that hydrant there, down there. And they just screw a hose on and turn it on, away you go.
We don't use the hydrant.
No, I need to fill our county water truck.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I'm gonna have to ask Jeff where they fill it up.
Well, that one's up over by the bathroom, I think.
Yes.
The one that they used to fill up the water truck, yeah. And then there is another one at the end, the other end of the stadium.
Yeah, over by Armstrong Park, I think there's another fire hydrant.
So that is it, revision.
And these, I just put kinda years on them, thinking of how it'll probably end up. If we can do stuff sooner, that would be great, but that's it's just a guess on how fast I think things might hurt.
Let me ask you about the tractors. Apparently not strong enough.
Did you get the other thing that has the forks that go down deeper?
Cause I've just seen up here, new tractor was stronger groomer, I don't know what you're talking about.
Um, from at the meeting, um, we were talking about needing a bigger groomer that went down in. But the tractor we have and the P T O will not run a bigger groomer than what we have. So that's why.
Seems like a rotor tiller?
Just like right now, you don't wanna.
We just have.
It's like, it's just a soft comb and you don't, you've gotta be pretty careful with it, cause it dulls the blades pretty quickly and you don't.
And it wears them off, we purchased some. Yeah, and, and they are really expensive to redo every year.
And when you're, somebody did it too deep, we had some issues with horses going down. You don't wanna go down about that far, you don't wanna go down that far, because it makes you too goofy.
Those tendons and stuff.
So is that, and still?
We just, we just bought that.
We, yes, we did.
Three years ago? That new tractor, three years ago?
And that's why I put it out there a little bit. We could use it this year, if you could do it, yes.
It was longer than three years ago.
The tractor, yeah?
About three years ago, it was right when I started.
Transfer over to, if we fixed it, but they sold the other one, right? And then that money went towards this new one and then sharing it with the county. So that the rest of the funds were received to pay for the tractor we have now. I don't know if it's enough.
Seemed to be like it was a forty-five horse. Coyote or caboodle or something.
And I, I don't know that it, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's gonna meet the needs of the arena. And so if it's not, then can we sell it for a good profit to get one that does?
You're, you're not gonna find a tractor right now.
If you even want one.
Come and find one here Saturday, and they have two tractors in their whole yard.
I think. Sure, I believe it.
Everything is gone, so. You're gonna have to learn to live with that one for a while.
To not get one either. But Carl can do some maintenance for those T T who have had an idea, so we should talk to him.
He welded something, yeah.
You know, are they bolt on teeth, coming through? Have two bolts in them? Cause I have. I could sub them at home.
Yeah. And I think that's where Carl, okay, that might actually, cause I think Carl got rid of a bunch of them. And if we have the parts, we've got someone to help us.
Where's the tractor now? Which building is it in?
It's in the steer buil-, all the way to the very end.
Steer building? I'll go look at that too.
Right now, the first three items are all dependent on the rodeo. And then last on the two years, gate from building to rodeo secretary. So where is that? Is this what you're talking about, you know?
The rodeo booth is at, at the, um, bottom end of the grandstands, under those trees probably. Um, west side. Right under there, yeah.
Where is the gate then? What do you need gates?
Casey's. Gate from the end of the grandstands.
Other side, cause we have to run back and forth.
Or before the booth, because with all of these guys warming up, um, some of those horses can get pretty hot. And you've got little kids signing up for rodeo booths for mind busting and stuff.
So Dawn, what about, what about the other side of it then, where the, the vending is?
Really, sorry, really what should be done is, it should be in a safer spot where people can check in and then come get their payouts. Rather than running back and forth, why aren't we using walkie talkies to get information, rather than running score sheets back and forth?
We have used walkie talkies before and, um, well, whenever you needed somebody, they never answered.
Okay, well.
To make a really long story short.
Yeah, exactly. We have walkie talkies.
But we don't have very good cell service up there either, so when I'm calling down to the.
It's too loud.
You, yeah, you can't hear.
But do, we need to implement something like that, rather than running back and forth?
So the ring, that's what I was thinking.
Booth, is that what you?
I don't know if it needs to be moved, it just needs to be.
Well, if we put that fence up, we could move it up, so.
North.
Yes.
And then if you moved your concession.
You have to lose more information on how big the gate, you know, what's, how, what's the length, all that kinda stuff, so.
Okay. If it stays where it is, it's a large gate, it would probably be a double gate, because you drive through there.
Yeah.
That's where the semi truck backs up and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So that would be like a double gate.
And if you knock down that little building, that little white one towards the other end of the, that is where they do concession now. It's basically, just so you know, it's about where you fall over, isn't it? And pretty, pretty bad. Yeah, too. So, but that's like, so you could combine your bathroom around, just saying that's instead of using that.
Beer and stuff. And then we set up a tent in front of it and then the concession, or the check in is under a tent. We just put tables up. With the cash registers, we don't use that for tickets anymore. It's like a storage and beer.
Yeah. So this was, Jenny had mentioned that it would help her to have somewhere like the bathroom or in the middle.
We're almost out of time, so I don't wanna, I think some of it still needs to be faired out through the board.
Right.
And come back with some really set, you know, guidelines on what you want, lengths, widths, whatever that looks like. And then Scott, I'm happy to help, you know, it sounds like El's happy to help, you know, whatever we need to do to help you to drill down on some of this stuff.
So we got anywhere on the locks on the barns, just so we know, um, cause right now they're county locks. And, um, she has to go to the county to get into our barns.
We don't care just. So your guys' locks never show back up. That's why there's county locks.
Oh, they got changed out. We do have those locks, they're in the van. The ones that were, were fair. But they get changed out because they have control over what vehicles go in there, you know, so. Way for safety, we want to make sure that the assessor trucks are, it gets.
So we can't give you guys a lock where if we have, uh, stuff inside, that's the problem. So once we separate everybody, then, you know, that's gonna be a better scenario. But right now, if you're down there and you need, you are gonna have to get it. There is our, our stuff in there. You don't want that, right? And we can't accept that.
And if you guys are setting what vendors and who's going in there and all of that, that's perfectly fine.
And I went to Jeff.
There's not a lock right now in the steer barn, right? Or is that fixed?
No, it is. I think Carl has a lock on it.
Carl has a lock on it, but it's not a county lock.
Oh, because it's.
It's ours.
Yep, but.
I think county has to need it in there for the tractor, right?
Jeff to help maintain it, and I do think he has a key as well.
Okay.
You know, I'll check in again, but he was great. We went and found a key for the assessor barn and I made sure I could get in there if I need to for, I've got tables and chairs and we put some kayaks in there. That's for.
So they're county locks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've got it, we've got it figured.
They're county locks until the week of the fair and then they turn into ours. Okay. Same as I was.
And then you guys are working on your budget for this year. And because we will need, so this is, this is the big overarching question. And this is, this is what started this whole conversation right from the front, is who's paying for what? So the county's taking this over. So then if you guys are gonna levy for fifty thousand dollars, you have to be able to tell the taxpayers where that money's going. If you don't levy for it, we need to levy for it to help fix all of this. So we really need to know what your funds are gonna be extended for.
We're actually levying, yeah. Ground some, Doug, how much can we bump that levy every year?
As long as it's not bumping up against the, the levy limit.
As long as it's not bumping up against the, the levy limit.
They're not under the three percent budget or any of that stuff?
No.
And it affects our levy.
I was gonna say the statutes you gave us.
We do have to have, we can't go more than three percent.
On our overall budget.
Exactly, and they're under that overall.
Correct, but they have a specific levy limit that the fair grounds cannot go over.
But if they don't levy for it, then we levy for it to fix these items. Cause lots of.
Under the general fund, y- yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying, instead of doing it as a fair levy, it would just be under the general fund levy.
Correct.
I don't think it's very much forty, forty-two cents of maybe thousands or something.
So when I figured what these guys could do with, with that hundred thousand.
Bring us a budget. Yeah, bring us a budget, we can, we could do with a levy. Some of it, maybe all of it, I don't know, too, it's a number.
And people that know it goes toward fairgrounds.
It can only be used for the fairgrounds.
So you wanted to include our, this year's operating expenses and upgrades, is that what you're asking, or just operating expenses?
If you guys do operating expenses, then you can add some of these upgrades.
Because, just, and I wanna get on the same page a little too with that. Same, uh, is that Mackenzie was working on the webpage and it, you know, just keeps coming back to this conversation, so fairgrounds are owned by Valley County. And the maintenance, and we stumbled into this, that, that's not on Fair Board because Fair Board's main priority is to put on the Valley County Fair and rodeo. So anything that extends outside of that for the repairs or all the monies, that would be, do need to come probably from a levy that you guys formulated. I mean, if we're all on that same, because the responsibility of those repairs, they come from Valley County.
Operating is gonna be, operating's gonna be the vendors, stock contractor, all of those things to put the fair on, not gravel, not paint, not that stuff.
You see, right now, you don't, you don't ask for the three thousand dollars.
For maintenance.
And I'm guessing that should probably have another view behind it.
Right, with all these.
For the overall, yeah.
Well, and, and that will be out of our budget eventually, we need a line item for fair. But I just need, you know, we need to know exactly what you need to create. Make a profit at the end of the day. And it would be nice to know how many more, um, you can put on those grandstands.
Seats, right.
We put ten thousand dollars a year into that, I mean, is that paper itself almost because of the income you're gonna be able to receive? All right, still clear as mud, but we're getting.
We all have our duties, and I think we can all, we can have another workshop if you guys want here, in another month or so, or whatever.
Might be help, well, we'll have a budget workshop if you do want, so that might be the best one.
I think we need.
Up front, Doug.
What did you find out about the grandstand, what did you find out about the little bridges, what did you find out about the tractor, all that? If we can come together and talk about.
I have a question. Minutes, the royalty. What was the deal with that? Is royalty going to be a sub-account of rodeo, fair and rodeo?
I told, um, I don't know if it was a.
Margot, Margot.
I told her you are a part of the fair and rodeo, everything is one cohesive unit, you are not separate, you don't have separate funds. You may have a budget line item, talk to Kathy about that budget line item.
Okay, so that's what.
Everything is under my road.
I don't know, I don't understand, that's why I'm asking. Margot's trying to get ahold of me and I'm, I'm just assuming I'll just make it a sub-account, keep track of her money in and out. But, sounds like if we're in charge of royalty, we should be funding royalty as well.
To a certain point, you can spend a lot of money and send your royalty all over the western United States to every fair and rodeo.
Right, that's where I'm looking for clarification.
Pay for that. So you've gotta decide, okay, are you gonna go to Snake River and be a part of that, how much is that gonna cost us? So you have to kinda decide, as a fair board, this is where we're gonna send our room. If you're gonna go to Cambridge and do that, easy piece.
Right now, we're just buying their crowns, their buckles, their coats, we're not, we're not sending them places.
Right, and there's some people that want that.
Yes, okay.
Toby said to me, you know, the same, kinda same concept, this is your budget, like you guys come up, this is what you work within. If you need to go raise money and do that, royalty's done that in the past, you know, and that might be that this is what we can allot you right now.
Okay, that's totally fine, I just wanted to have everything clear.
That's great.
I thought they were getting you own checking.
That's what I thought too, that's what I, I'm just making sure.
They should not have their own checking accounts, you don't want every single person in the league that you have their own checking accounts. Those are county funds that all need to be audited.
Can I ask one other thing then, so can the fair board be, like have a mailbox in the county mailroom?
We go to the post office.
I mean, if somebody wants to drop something off?
Absolutely.
Because just needing that middle person to deal, since there's so many outside things going on now.
Is it box thirteen fifty, Doug?
Well, I can use our, I just mean like a drop-off, not a P O box.
In the clerk's office.
Right, Margot can drop off checks, they're in a safe place, and I'm not coordinating eighteen different days and it falling through every time.
Is okay with that?
Yeah, but I, I guess I'm concerned about the royalty, is, does that fall under Valley County Fair Board operations?
Right.
Okay.
I'll just make it a sub-account, keep track of their in and out.
Yep.
I just need, that would be great if I could have a middle ground here for drop-off. Cause they do sponsors and everything.
Yeah, we can do that.
You have to think of royalty kinda like Miss America passion, if you win Miss Valley County, then you gotta go to Miss Idaho. Win Miss Idaho, then you go to Miss America, somebody's gotta pay those costs, and usually it's the people that are winning are the ones that are trying to raise money, but people sponsor them.
Right.
Pay the airfares, pay those bills.
Right.
And royalty from here will probably go to Snake River or Call of Night Rodeo and compete there. You could go Curden Nationals in Las Vegas. It costs money, and, you know, how far do you wanna go?
Our royalty right now, I think are all barrel racers and doing the high school rodeos, so they are all over.
Oh, yeah.
They are all over Texas, they're in here, I mean, they're all over doing these.
If they're rethinking for that, they should have a separate set aside, so those funds are not going for something else, correct?
But you gotta buy the crown, you gotta buy the buckles for your competition.
Yes.
And that's what your expenses should be.
Thank you.
Get outta here.
Thank you.
We're getting there, guys, we're getting there.
Is there anything else you wanna talk about for H?
Doug?
Yeah, she has.
We'll be directly with you for the.
We have a set schedule though, but we will definitely get you on the agenda.
Yes.
I can't go.
Can I get a copy of that, uh, clean earth contact?
So with clean view?
Oh, clean earth, the one we did sign. Did I have to send a copy of that back to them?
You can do that for me, that would be great, once the, this documents get signed, if you could just make sure that, uh, Amanda
Like one flower.
Uh, gets the electronic version.
Do you guys need this for your four-H presentation?
Yeah, if you can send that on, I'll send it back to you.
It's actually a, it's a PowerPoint, I don't have a thumb drive. Just, there's a little PowerPoint of just what I wanted to share.
Do you have an H D M I for us?
Are you plugged in right now to the county? Oh, I, oh, on here I do, yes. Can I plug that into here?
We need to talk about, so.
So Doug, they need to.
I just went to ask it, like I don't know how many times, we haven't talked about the survey we're supposed to do.
Okay, I think, okay, that, and you've got Melissa, maybe her ear, you know, for a minute? I think she'd be amazing. Looks her way. So, do you wanna grab her ear in a little bit, or? Okay, she would be great.
Okay, no.
Yep, 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 just press them out. Okay, any handouts?
I know, a little old-fashioned, well, as a case, I would've loved to do a PowerPoint, but the whole point is that I'm just short steps, we don't have enough time.
We understand.
We understand. So we did this, at least to give you some numbers and a current, current idea of what's. So, okay, I'll just kinda go through this, and what I'm. Okay, so my hopes are to bring to the forefront here about how important navigating for this four-H assistant position is. It's been wonderful that I've had lots of AmeriCorps in this support over the year, and, and intern, and it's just not that consistent kinda help. It goes away and you're retraining.
So before we do a ton here, so the way it works within the county is when you want a new position, HR works with you on a job description.
Okay.
And then there are specific things you answer, as far as our STAR initiative. How does this create service transparency, accountable responsibility? And that goes through the budget process, so tell me where you are in that process.
Well, we do have a job description, and, um, I would have to go through the, my boxes for the STAR.
Okay.
To make sure I organize that information correctly, I don't think it'd be an issue to.
Perfect.
Put that information together.
So when you get, when you get done, work with Pat, because that document needs to be completed.
Okay, so we do have that document, Pat has seen it and has it.
Okay, perfect.
And then I've asked Allison just to make sure that it's represented, that she actually needs, it was based off of the format or the template of the position that exists in Washington County.
That document is a STAR document. Was that the judge?
It's a position, it's a Valley County position, so. And I, I presented it last year for the budget request. Was, no, it went through all those steps.
Okay, perfect. Hey, sorry, I just had to get that out of my brain and now I can listen.
Whatever I have to do, dot my i's and cross the t's here to, so, it's asked often, why is four-H part of Valley County, what is part of concern or what, what's the drive behind this? And I think now more than ever, we can say that life skills and kids catching up and these hard skills are gonna be really, really viable in the world, and that they are. I've grown by another twenty percent in my program, I mean, I'll look through what I have here, but, um, really what four-H is about is supporting those youth, help them develop those stronger mindsets. Even just having thirty kids at a retreat over the weekend, having them in the kitchen, just with, some of them are allowed to hold a knife at home, or I don't know what they're learning or what they're getting, but just those really tangible skills that get you through your everyday and, and hopefully for a job in the future, whether it be in a college or a trade. So these, I do see, and I have over fourteen years, some of these kids are coming back and it's kind of the best reflection piece you can do to see, what are you doing? Well, I got my C D L, and I'm, I'm moving on, and I'm, I'm, good for you, and I had the confidence, I had job experience or interview experience because of four-H. I had these speaking skills because of four-H, I knew I could start something and finish something because of four-H. And I could set goals and I could reflect on them. So that's part of that, whole content of why four-H is important in youth development. So what we do, our structure of work and why it's about, send a dance to get this all done on my own and, and be able to help, give us help as much as possible. Is that, um, the recruiting, screening, training of volunteers to work with youth. I did a whole meeting that took us forty-five minutes the last time, just on what it takes to get those volunteers in place. Uh, youth and family enrollment, placement into clubs, identifying projects, animals and how to complete project requirements. All very time-consuming, all very on a need basis. Just even promoting and getting the word out so that you know you're doing your best to, and that's a, that's a whole nother skillset in Valley County, I think that we can all relate to of trying to get that information and, um, communication out, uh, working with schools and having good powerful relationships with the principals and the good sustainable partners that, um, are willing to open their doors and respect our, our program and what we do for kids. Educational opportunities that give you the tools, and we use research-based resource handbooks, I mean, even just the dog one. Spend three or four years with a kid on how to do obedience and, uh, training, and by the end you even know about their health and not just dogs alone, and we do have a dog group this year. We have eleven kids in a sewing group, we have more and more of these expanding opportunities where we've got the drive for the people to help us with it. Our committees and body of work have many, monthly, so just one volunteer is required to go to six meetings and six trainings on how to work. And so that's a, it's a huge commitment, and they don't come to every single meeting, but I make sure there's enough of them. That they, there's, their attendance, I mean, that, even a spreadsheet that shows that their club is behind or on track with the requirements. And then that extends back down into their club, they, they assess of the kids, it's a state requirement, you must attend six meetings. Um, to be proficient, you know, kind of proficient even, and that's just a minimum in any subject or project area. You know, it's to give them a good, a good taste of it, but it's not fair to expect either the kid or the leader to stand behind a kid. In a state, let's say even a livestock scenario, and know that they'll be safe with that animal, or with that animal's, what's been taken care of. So it's a lot of communication between all of them and making sure that this is down the line. You know, we have a high level of responsibility and it's good to have the dream for those animals. Take it to a higher standard, those animals, at least when you do get them at auction, they're better than anything you've had. The horse contingency is growing, we're at twenty-five kids at this time, and that's up quite a bit. The challenges that we're doing with the horses, we're gonna take on some more English riding and some different opportunities for kids. So they may expand what that looks like, so there's more money so that a kid can't afford all the English tech. Still an opportunity for a kid in Valley County to maybe lease a horse and get this. So it's not where, it's not just this private club, this is, you engage youth in Valley County so that they know that scholarship or support and help, um, there are these opportunities. They also, uh, are a very active horse group this year, and they, um, have just been granted nine hundred and eighty dollars in Idaho Horse Department to put onto the clinics, and to hire judges for those clinics, so they can divide, not judges, instructors. They divide the groups up between beginning and more advanced parties. And this is where we've noticed we can retain our teams, we keep them involved more longer in four-H. Valley County as a whole, we retain our teams in their average programs, smaller counties. The challenge limits. For the horses, for example, with horse ranch riding and other classes to keep them decided about to. Now I've done this.
Are there good trail networks for them? I mean, I, I've heard that our, uh, horse trails, we don't have very many, and people are actually leaving the area because are there still good trail networks for horses to ride in?
You know, I, I'm sure there is, I'm sure that there's been closures over the years of land, just not in.
That's not something you're doing.
Not that I know of, no one's directly said, hey, I. An issue. A lot of our focus for four-H is, we want you to be able, at the end of it, to ride a horse safely, take care of a horse well. And at some point, when you do have horses, you'll be a responsible horse, let the horse overcome. What's with all the programs, if you're gonna raise livestock, well, you're gonna do it well, proficiently, and, and that way we're trying to add that research-based education so that they're not, I heard best way to that, and if you can just do this, oh, no, you know, it's. Oh, no, you know, they, they're the wise tales, or, or why, why do we have this, uh, why do we have these kinda programs? That's practice. Two seamstresses now that are gonna be. They actually learn how to hem a comb. Awesome, it's not a lost art. Let me see my pictures come up, I have the young man, then he helps, helps the, um, higher jumpers to do their chutes, and so he got this idea because they did a little field trip and they're seeing what else you can do, and what else is out there. So that is a lot of what four-H, but it's all these different events that come together, so, and it's important to have that market sale committee, and they, and they have to be my. All these different events that come together. So it's important to have that market sale committee and they, and they have to be my. Go-to because I have to be able to trust them to get, to be there when they say they're going to be there and to do something. That, that's a huge challenge. That we have a livestock truck lined up. We have production facilities ready. We have the means to end partnerships so that these animals. Not only aren't encouraged around the county that. Get that support from our community, but also that. The whole experience is good. You know, it's not like, ah, I don't know where you took it. Bad, you know, it's with, all those producers work together and it's all an industry that's really important. Those relationships. So just more of what we do for the field days, just always take time in planning to set up. We try to give many different topics or subject areas. Sometimes it'll be about understanding medicine labels better, how to inject. Your own. Forming medicine or whatever your animal might need. Sometimes it's a, different cuts of the meat to just to different. The actual room inside of a beef, how their stomachs work so that if you've got one that bloats at some point, you have some idea of what to do. To help your animals. So that education goes on and is engaging. After-school programs, we're sneaking in. We don't just have traditional 4H. We sneak in into our programs, I have to say, because we're placed in. Donnelly After-School Programs Cascade. We work with already partnerships that are there so that we're not recreating everything that we want to do. It's can we plug in and help. In school teachers as well, out of Donnelly. Some more examples of the classes we offer and I just found there with the small animal clinic and we. This year alone, we've done the sewing clinic. We are going to be doing all these, the dog obedience, the showmanship and short-term education projects is our new goal. I pull in kids that might not traditionally do 4H because they might not have that time. I might not have enough volunteers to help those kids in that, in a whole year that they can commit that much time. So let's say we do a three-year track and this year we're going to focus on some leather craft, some archery, quilting and. Junior master gardeners. So they could each just get a little taste of what 4H is like, start something, finish it, but not be committed to the long-term project. And it just explains more kids and identifies, explains 4H to more people. They need that experience. Just with the grant alone this year, just an update as of March tenth. My team has conducted, and myself, and we've conducted thirteen drone stand programs. The total contact time, twenty-five hours. Been able to reach three hundred and forty-eight students in the ages of five to fourteen throughout Cascade, Donnelly and McCall. And this wouldn't be possible without the support of that grant team. I couldn't. Done this. There's no way that I could have helped. But we put five hundred hours to receive necessary trainings. So that's a huge part. We've created a lot of that curriculum for the drone programs that we do. And the three D programs. I'll go to ISTEM and I will learn, you know, I go and get the basics and work with other teachers, but. We're trying to work in the little Valley County who's out of school. Connection of how do we strengthen what they're doing in school without doing the job of this. Really our role or our role is to see what we can do to give them the necessary skill set that. Make them more successful.
Up to two more. So Allison's been a leader in bringing innovative STEM programming to the 4H world. So while there's some other educators that are doing their own work, Allison was first, my knowledge, in the state doing it. So she's led the way to do some really innovative programming in Valley County and now it's being adopted by other counties. So I just wanted to.
Right, it's awesome.
Yeah, and so.
Well, part of that grant programming is to train the trainer. So that's a big one, like the more you can train another adult to work with the kids.
So Allison, are you kind of thinking about part-time, twenty hours a week, thirty hours a week? Are they going to be off in the winter time? And how's, how do you envision this extra help?
I could envision, so I, I believe twenty hours a week would be a beautiful start. Maybe that would give everybody a chance to see what benefit this was and absolutely I could use that person every single week. There's no, I like how it's kind of thought of, oh, you must have slow time. You kind of just work in around fair. Really, that's not, it's not true. Not true in the, in the slightest. We don't stop year-round. If we're close enough, then we're still doing recognition so I can support the volunteers. And it's a lot of, it's nice, it would be so nice to split some of this up, do a lot of night meetings and take different calls because they're volunteers. I'm not going to say, I don't have time for you. I, yeah, yes, I do. Of course I do. A lot, you know, and it'd just be nice to not have to be at every single one or to have, and have somebody else know how to do it.
Well, you're, you're a successful person. I mean, look how it's grown. The numbers are phenomenal that you have to deal with all the time. I think that's. That's a, you know, a compliment to you. And I feel like, yeah, we, we can get you some help. I just need to know that, you know, we got to go through the process. Pat's going to help you get through that, put the job out. Or do you have somebody in mind that has already expressed interest?
Not at this time. I will look to that. What's amazing is that they do come back. Like I've got two college interns that they were competing to be my intern. Like, that was the biggest problem ever. Anyway. Then the state 4H office said, we'll get, you are trying to move this year. You've got all this to do to get out of that office and what's ahead of you on your plate, we're giving you two.
That's awesome.
I get to have both of them this year. So I'm kind of wondering where they're going to be in a phase or talking to maybe some of my posts. If they're coming back to the area, would this be some, a reason if they have a place to live with their family, would this be a good connection? But I'll have to. Dealers out for.
So Pat, can you help with this? Because I know some of this, we have to run through background checks and that kind of stuff. Is that correct on a part-time?
The sheriff has its own system and then we have another one. But, so this will have to go through the budget though, right?
Yeah, and that's my concern is how we can, it sounds like you've got enough help for this year, but we need to swing it for next budget.
We can get that.
So we just go through the normal budget process, then we determine when you're ready and we, you know, post it.
We do have a position description. I did forward that to you all now and that's the one that we presented last year. There's one typo in it. It says Washington County. I'll change that to Valley County and then make sure that we look at it and say, this is accurate, represents the need. But it is in the works. We'll just fine-tune it and then I'll re-present, re-present that.
Sure, and that'll probably be pretty standard because 4H itself has its own requirements of training that. An individual would need so that they can have the competencies to help.
And then I'd assume that you would come up with the salary?
And then the other question that we had was, would you guys consider adopting, you know, putting extra time in this position? Somebody to manage that fairgrounds down there, opening and closing it for all these different events.
I think this will go from twenty to thirty hours in about a month. I can see that happening.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm saying. The county has to identify somebody down there to open those buildings for all of these different events we want to have and.
That's going to be a job.
A portion of, you know.
If you have a facility, which I wouldn't question, you know, maybe we fill my role and I, I'm not going to say, I wouldn't want to help run a facility. To have like our project manager to make sure that you're building, you build a nice facility. Let's get wedding venues in there. Let's get.
That's in the future.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Don't, yeah, don't get too far out there. That's, that's sometime in the future when we can look at funding, but for this year.
Good to know.
If you guys are. If you guys are not going to go and open up the building for the flower show, you know, in May, who's going to do that?
Who's your person?
So that's, that's why I'm saying, you know, we need somebody in the county that is looking at some of this.
Well, that's always kind of been really honestly, somebody at the road department.
Well, and. What extent, what extent do you want to open?
No, I mean to open up the buildings and get their stuff out of the way. That's usually the issue.
Clean those floors because there's oil and mud caked on them so that they can be ready for, and are your bathrooms open?
But you guys have been doing it. My understanding is somebody's already committed to a flower show. Maybe that was the fair board.
It's Long Valley Gardeners do a plant sale and that will move a couple of trucks out and then. I'll probably get in there a little before because if we do a little yard sale too for a fundraiser, but help sweep out that barn, there really isn't anybody assigned to do that either. So that's been myself or other volunteers to go.
Well, Duo does, Duo, Duo to others has a yard sale every year. I think there's. So the Fourth of July Parade, they have some stuff that kind of goes out through some of those buildings. People store their floats in there if it's. So there's, that's a good point, Sheriff. We need to have somebody that's kind of overseeing that besides the road department.
And somebody needs to make sure that they have appropriate liability insurance for these events. And I don't think anyone's ever even been looking at a contract, a liability issue. So somebody needs to make sure all that paperwork.
Well, we've, we've had different users over the years get liability insurance.
Where's all those documents?
Doug's got them.
And didn't legal here put together that forms and those contracts? So we're very, okay, very specific about how that has.
We had a motorcycle race one year and they had to have liability insurance. And then was it last year, the group that wanted to use that for, remember Doug and?
The UTD takeover?
Yeah, and we said, well, you got to come in and get liability insurance and the bathrooms and how you're going to handle them. So it didn't happen and I think. Those folks will probably be back this year wanting to use it.
They're already talking.
So I was going to look to other counties to see how they might manage that and then also just through my supervisor. See if that's something we could put into that position description. And so I heard that request before, but I haven't had a chance to do follow-up of kind of information gathering, investigate the possibilities. But I think if we did, if that was even possible, if we did do something like that. Would have to be like where we were tracking the hours that went towards that with the understanding that we would be. Doing data gathering, gathering throughout the year to say, this is the amount of time that's actually being used towards that. So then we weren't essentially just dumping another task on a person. And not having like the true time that was needed to be allocated towards that position.
And that's what I'm wondering. If instead of asking us for, you know, point two oh, is it a point two five? So an extra five hours a week, a point three oh, an extra ten hours a week. What does that look like in order to create a system where a person would be receiving all of those applications to use the facilities down there? Making sure that, you know.
It could take a part-time position and make it a full-time position with benefits, which would add to sustainability of that position. That might be a perk.
Depending on the, yeah, depending on the needs of that 4H.
But we can do thirty hours for each, ten hours for the county.
And it just, it's that job description you want to create, you know, because that, that job could go quite extensive too. They're the ones that are responsible for cleaning up those buildings or shutting them down or renting stuff for, I don't know what that would look like. Like what would their limitations, you know, what are they responsible for? Going through the applications, approving them, getting a deposit, making sure the building's ready.
Making sure they have liability insurance, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that kind of thing and that, how much time, how many events. Like maybe it's limited to so many events the first year just to.
Well, and it's really tough. We can't really ask our buildings and grounds guys because we're at one right now and.
That's not their forte either.
It's not really their job. Their job is to fix stuff that breaks.
And the road department is there, but they're just convenience. I mean, they're not trained to do that either and I don't think that should fall on Mickey with one more responsibility down there.
It's been a gray area for years.
So there, you know, we do need to fill this role somewhere and it would make sense for you guys to fill that role, most particularly in the future. Where, you know, the long-term plan would be to put you guys there.
So Melissa, you're thinking that maybe you might be able to do some of that if you talk to Dr. Moma?
I was going to look to see what other counties were doing, how they were filling that need. And then I also just wanted to get approval from Dr. Moma that that type of ask would even be accommodated or even. Fill into a 4H position because, because it is a little bit, it's outside of the scope of 4H. So that's, I just needed to do more data finding.
Well, and honestly, the issue in the past has been because we have so many different fair board members. It changes every year and you get used to a situation and somebody retires, like Randy Redman used to be the go-to guy for a lot of years on the county stuff down there. And people retire and you got new people. So it's, that doesn't work. We need somebody that's already here and getting a salary to take on that task. Whether it's you guys or one of ours, I don't know, but.
Exactly what like Allison was saying is like volunteers are great or AmeriCorps are great or interns are great, but they can't hold the consistency of what.
We need a coordinator.
That position, yeah, that, that position does seem to be.
It might be half-time 4H, half-time fair board event coordinator, something like that.
Well, yeah, if, that's kind of a good you-of-my question too. You're right. They might not have the, I know they might have some protocol.
And I, I do understand that comment, but you're our employee.
It's true. It would be a canny sustain. And I can't see Dr. Lindstrom saying.
Well, so then what if it was twenty hours, that, that fair board event planner and twenty hours for H, there would somehow have to be two different hats. But yes, you're right. It's a county position.
And it limits the expandability of that 4H assistant position too. It says for, you're set for doing twenty hours always on the fair. So I don't know if there'd be some crossover.
Honestly, I see that working as, you know, some weeks you're going to get him full-time for the whole week. Other weeks, he's going to do fair stuff. Or, you know, county fair board stuff.
Some crossover, so that would be.
So there's going to be some trade and give-off. It's not going to be exactly.
If you guys will do that research, give us some feedback, you know, sooner rather than later so we can kind of start thinking about, you know, how we need to cover this.
And who knows, eventually maybe the fair component is so large that, you know, for the 4H. Things. It's a good place to start it.
Right now, I'm kind of leaning towards more of a maintenance guy because we don't have enough maintenance guys. And this is going to be part of his or her job is to do that right now because they're going to know, they're going to have that history behind them, kind of like Scott is.
Reporting to Scott?
Probably reporting to Scott. Maybe Scott would want to do it and turn over some of his tasks, but we need more maintenance around here. We're not getting, we're not keeping up with the maintenance.
You just want me to bring in Sam Redman? You want me to bring in old Redman's kid? It's, it's a young man that was really helpful down there. He even flipped the barn doors around so we had a fresher look and put him on the rail. But, yeah.
It sounds like if you guys can do some homework, we'll do some homework and then we'll come up with something at the end of the day that works for the county as well.
Right. You've got five more minutes. Anything else? Anything else you want to talk about?
No, I had some fun pictures for you to look at. But that's okay. But just what was neat is I did, what's already happened this year is pretty incredible. We had some kids just make some really great things already for, and I just had some photos of that. And the kids that I took from around our district and kids that had never been on snowshoes or, you know, this. Took them out of farm way in some areas that don't get these lot of opportunities and it was just incredible.
Doug's turning it back on. So are your pictures coming up?
One last ask, so can we share 4H program and outcomes with Mackenzie? Did that out to?
That's a question. So Mackenzie.
Should be okay.
Is working on a four fair board website and just wants to know if it. She believes in, I believe that it would be best housed through Valley County with a sub, you know, the fair board sub-line. And if they need a link to update their.
Touch base with her again because we had a conversation with her a week ago or two weeks ago and we were discussing that. And she, if I remember right, it was, she really thinks you guys should have a separate website. So that when people are typing in fair and rodeo, you know, it goes to a website specific to that.
There's too many of those that they're going to and she, when she understood that, oh, fair board is. Commissioners do have to pick who those people are. It is a Valley County entity. It is. Instead, you've got people that are looking for a form and you say, go to the Valley County site. Oh, okay, now we're going to the right place.
Whatever works.
I don't know. We just went through the rigmarole. Like what would that look like?
So bring up your pictures.
The commission was different than that. It was if we have, for example, the drone programming coming up next week.
It would just have been the HG.
If it was to go on the paper ad or.
It would have been just the HG and my cord. For some reason, we're not connected.
Looking at.
It depends, I think it just depends on how much space because we're pretty limited on the size. Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah. I mean, as far as the social media stuff. Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as the social media stuff goes, I think that would be easy. Yeah. I thought you were act, actually asking more about like the print ad that we run.
We chat to Mackenzie.
So Allison, for the four H programming.
Three minutes, so pick some good ones.
Okay, well, that's the little crew I took up to Quaker Hill. And the lodge, yeah, across the street down there and I cooked all their food for two and a half days, all their meals and borrowed thirty-two sets of snowshoes so that we could get out there. It was just fun, yes. They even put them that close to a big ponderosa tree like. So in clinic, I just want you to check out this little girl that we had to put blocks underneath her foot.
Oh, my goodness.
So she could let that pedal rip. And she's, look how good she's doing, she's.
How old is she? Oh, oh, my, my granddaughters then can get going.
I'm pulling, she does have that, and then these kids here, this, they're all stoked. We were able to get eight machines going at once down at the We're doing a lot of partnership there. This is what they made, this is what they made are these rabbits.
Oh, how funny is that?
Cultural Arts Center too, I'll say, with this grant, I put ten thousand dollars over there for equipment with the laser printer and whatnot and in return she's going to help with the kitchen, potentially wipe, there's some grants out there to maybe make that commercial, we had talked. Anyway, some good collaborative work. This is my horse pool team this year, we haven't done this good or got, reached out outside of our county and into a different so between the other ten counties, first year they came, first time doing this, fourth place. Really big deal because it's a very competitive, I think it has a hundred and twenty-five kids in there, horse program, you know, it's huge.
Funny picture.
That was just funny. Uh, this drone program in Cascade, we've done, and we're doing some more next week in McCall and Donnelly, but it was very successful. But we haven't construct things too to put on the cage, so they had to kind of weigh like what, they're also calibrating things and figuring out how much weight a drone can hold. So we did like a performance art piece and they put music and the water table. We did a water table and a fire, like with the fire getting away and what did that look like? And so the older kids did it for the younger. Tried to share what they learned. Just a few pictures and this is all what's happened recently.
Where was that last picture taken?
That was Cascade in the cafeteria.
Oh, is it downstairs, okay. I was looking for big rooms.
Well, yeah, and we're going to take the junior high gym in McCall for next week's program. Elementary in McCall and.
You guys get back to us on this and
Okay.
And I think we can put some together.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, good seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea about what that position description would be like or do you? With it? And then, yeah, I mean.
What did you say, what it would pay?
The position description for that event planner for the fair.
I would work with, sorry commissioners, I would work with the R H R director.
I think Pat should.
Pat's really good at that stuff. You guys need a break?
Food and wine real quick.
While Jeremy gets up here and
Yeah, we call.
Just going to executive and then Doug can shut off and leave. So at this time, our next agenda item is an action item. Just need to go into executive session, per rider code seventy-four two oh six, one B, and this is for employee evaluations.
So moved.
My roll call, please.
I'm an I.
I'm an I.
That's right, Doug will be in at three thirty-two. Need a break, better.
There he is.
Go anyway.
We'll go get a break.